With our counsel Lisa Hockman that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order number 202.1 as again extended, which orders suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards such as this one to convene meetings via video conferencing such as Zoom. Francine Brill, our the planning board secretary, please confirm that tonight's meeting has been duly noticed and state for the record whether such notice has been posted and published.
Noticed, posted and published.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we have public hearings that will be continued and we have some that will be opened tonight, assuming appropriate motions are made and passed. All of them will be conducted in accordance with the governor's executive order number 202.15, also as again extended. The notices which relate to these hearings provided instructions for members of the public on how to view and participate in tonight's public hearings. The public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's planning board meeting on TV as well as online. This meeting is being broadcast live on LMC TV, which is channel 35 on Fios and channels 76 on Optimum. It is also live online at LMCTV.org. A transcript of tonight's meeting will be available at a later date. Francine, for the record, please call the role of the planning board members, including the alternate members, so that we may confirm who is present this evening.
Ralph Engel.
Speak. Yeah, present.
Elizabeth Cooney?
Yes.
Ed Papazian?
Here.
Ira Black?
Ira, you're muted, but you're present anyway.
I'm present even though muted.
John Mandel?
Here.
John Cuddy?
Here.
Sarah Dunn?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum. In addition, those individuals present to represent the town should please identify themselves by name and title so that the viewers know who they are.
Lisa Fittelman, I'm the liaison to the town board.
Lisa Hockman, counsel to the planning board.
Rob Wasp, town engineer.
Anthony Oliveri, consulting engineer to the town.
Elizabeth Batson, environmental planner.
Francine?
Phil, secretary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just to make it clear to anyone in the audience who will be participating, wishes to participate in the upcoming public hearings this evening, that cannot be done by chat. It has to be done otherwise. The chat entries do not make it into the public record and we are required to maintain a public record.
If I may interrupt for a moment, Francine, can you confirm, Francine or Rob, confirm that those matters on for public hearing have been duly noticed?
I can, yes, they have.
Thank you.
Okay, also just for the point of view of applicants, to remind them that there is a town moratorium on mechanical rock removal that is still in effect until I believe it's the end of June and applies whether or not things are approved by the planning board tonight. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of our last meeting, which was on February 10th. Have all the members of the planning board had a chance to review them? And does anyone have any comments?
I have, no.
Go ahead.
I have two comments. On the page two, paragraph one, number one, second paragraph, I believe in the second to last sentence, it should be Rocking Stone instead of Rock Ridge. And then in item two, paragraphs one, two, three, four, the notion that Mr. Oliveri suggested that there may be a drain line connected to the existing driveway is redundant as it's stated in the paragraph before.
Wait, oh, that's, what page is that on?
Page three, item number two.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yes, I do.
On page two, item number one, the traffic commission does not exist, the traffic committee does. On item page three, item number, excuse me, item number two, the first sentence, there should be a comma after the word owners prior to were present via Zoom.
Anybody else? Okay, maybe we have a motion then to accept the minute says modified?
Shlomo. Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, seen, adopted, thank you. Okay, item number one on the agenda today is a continuation of a public hearing regarding 151 Rocking Stone. Is the applicant available?
Okay, Ralph, I'm gonna start bringing the applicant team in, but before I do so, I just wanted to take a quick moment to point out to our applicant presenters tonight that there is a applicant, there's a presenter tools tab available when you screen share. This will let you draw on the screen and use a cursor to mark up anything that you might want to make more clear for the board and those watching the meeting to be able to view what you're pointing at. So the board would encourage you to use those tools during your presentation.
Thank you.
Does anybody else from the applicant's team still in the attendees group?
Is Shlomo from RGF on there?
Okay, see him. Anybody else, Elliot?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, Elliot, you wanna wait for other Shlomos joining us?
I'm just trying to share the right screen. All right, ready now, so as you can see on the screen, this is a house that was built in, that's being built in Scarsdale, the foundation.
Elliot, this is actually three Cornell, we're actually starting on 151 Rocking Stone.
Oh, 151 Mamaroneck, ah, wrong house, all right, I'll share the right one now. So I guess it's not Shlomo, the son Josh at, what's Josh's email, Ellen?
Yeah, I don't see Josh in the group, which is why I was, I didn't know if Shlomo was maybe sitting in for him.
No, all right, let me get this, this one, so let me try sharing that now. Share. Is that, do you see us, 151 that?
I think it's a portion of the plan, it's very much zoomed in.
All right, so.
Better, getting better, still has to go a little bit further.
I think that there's something wrong with this, I'm gonna try that again. All right, how's that?
Much better.
Much better, yep.
Now do we need to move in, is that beginning up now?
That's good.
All right, so this is a continuation, last month, we presented, there was many neighbors who had come out talking about trees. So I think a week or so later, the owner has met with Liz on site to review what trees were coming down and what trees that we think that could be saved. So all of these trees in the front here, there are four trees in this area as big as, well, I guess I gotta go to the landscape plan, as big as, well, the bigger, the bigger trees there. So these four are 30 inch oak, a 28 inch oak, there's a maple cluster here and a maple cluster there that we are gonna save. The canopy for these trees doesn't quite reach the excavation, even the over excavation, and so we decided to save these trees. The other trees were looked at by the client's arborist as well as Liz, and as far as I know, Liz had reviewed it, she could talk for herself, but those are the trees that we were gonna save in relationship to the comments by your board as well as the neighbors. I think that was the main open issue from the last time, if there's something else, you can certainly let me know and ask a question.
Can you just describe again the strip of land that you are seeking to get title to from the town? I'm not quite sure about what's going on there.
So in this, we could use this picture, so there's a retaining wall here right along the sidewalk, and there's a retaining wall here along the sidewalk, just in from the sidewalk. So the board and the town doesn't want to own that, those sidewalks, I mean those walls, those retaining walls. So the petition was made to the town board to acquire those, that area between the, between the property line and the wall. Here's a picture of the, one of the pictures of the area, let's see, we have, so we don't have a good picture, oh, here it is. So here's a picture of the wall on Rocking Stone.
Okay.
Walkway that comes in there, and this wall back here in the background that's at the bottom of these stairs is the property line. This, this wall here is in the foreground is inside the right of way.
I see, and so is the town agreeable to transfer title to you?
Yes, we have been in contact with the town board, I think we actually have a meeting scheduled with them. I think Rob may know more about it, we did do a quit claim deed, we submitted a map and a quit claim deed. The area here is marked as 2314 square feet between the, between the wall and the property line for the entire area.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Liz, and then just to add on to what Elliot was saying, so bill maker is aware of this request, and he had done an initial review of the documents prepared by the applicant's council, so this matter is on the 317, or at least tentatively on the 317 town board agenda.
No, I was just concerned as to what would happen if the, that property didn't wind up being conveyed because it's discussed in the proposed resolution, and what would be the result if that didn't happen? That was really my concern.
The reason the town is willing to cede it is so that it has no maintenance responsibility for the wall?
No, I understand that, I was just concerned that if something happened that held it up or it just never happened, what would, what would be the result, is it be this resolution?
Yeah, as far as us as the applicant is concerned, the house location is being proposed that the required setbacks off of the existing property line and isn't proposing to be moved any closer because we have more property or anything like that, it'll end up being, you know, an extra 10 feet away from the property line, I said that, so we're not, our site plan doesn't change.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah.
Liz, also so that you can, just to give you further answer, the initial draft of a resolution for tonight, it's still a draft, but the original draft tied the acquisition to a building permit. It's been changed, as you probably noticed.
To the CFO, yes.
CFO.
I saw that.
More time for the town and the applicant to work out legalities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there, any other member of the board who wants to say or ask anything?
There is a chat here from one of the neighbors asking, oh, I see Liz is answering it now.
Yeah.
But Liz, can you speak to that?
Speak to what?
Sorry, say that again.
Yeah, it should be into the, the chat's not on the record, so.
Yeah, just now.
I'll read it into the record. Judy Herbst asked the question, well, can you take us through your review of the three trees on corner of Rocking Stone and Mountain, close quote. Oh, I don't know if that's addressed to you, Liz, or to Mr. Senor.
I'm not sure, there are three, I guess which three trees, you know?
The three on the corner.
With the X's in them.
I would assume it's the three trees with the X's.
Well, I think, I think one of them was in horrible condition, like rotting, and then the other two were in the footprint of the drainage facility, drainage chambers, the Coltechs.
And it leans, and the one leans towards the, towards the existing house.
And I believe that all those conditions were part of an arborist report, Liz, right, that was submitted?
There was a.
Board members haven't seen that, I believe.
Well, we have, we got something, it was in this last package, we have a copy of the Evergreen Arborist's letter of December 15th, 2020, with the tree assessment on trees one through 16.
There's the arborist report that was enclosed in the package, it's two pages, yeah, December 15th.
For that.
But it wasn't, I didn't, at least I didn't put it with the right property in.
Does this letter revise?
I was revised after your meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, in any event, Liz, it's to your satisfaction, you have no questions concerning it.
I do not, my only comment was now that they've, you know, added more trees to protect it, they need to add.
Right, so, so to that end, Liz had suggested that, I think when you were out there, you had talked about some street trees, and we show the street trees that you recommended here, away from the canopy of those trees we're saving, basically they're white dogwood trees, and that was the suggestion, your suggestion, I think, because there was some historical significance of white dogwoods in the neighborhood?
There is, there's a plaque on the wall of Rocking Stone regarding Colonel Mott, who had planted 40 dogwood trees up and down the street, and over the years they've died.
And those trees are two and a half to three inch caliper, they're actually very large caliber trees as new plantings go.
That's good, and so have you added tree protection to the other trees on this?
Yeah, I think that they have tree protection, this dotted line here is tree protection, this dotted line, tree protection typical.
Yeah, but it's behind the trees that you're protecting.
Right, we haven't, yeah, I mean, that should have been around the front, and this one should have included the other two, you're right.
Right.
Certainly.
People are still using the chat function.
What's, Elliot, what's gonna go in the retaining wall along Mountain Avenue? All the vegetation's been cut back from there that, that's on the photos, what's gonna be there now? Or what's gonna replace that vegetation?
Well, that's, that was scrabbly stuff, it's gonna be a ground cover, it's not gonna be anything overly large. We don't want to plant anything overly large between the retaining, between the two walls because that helps it fail. So there'll be some shrubs and some ground cover, let me see if the landscape plan shows that.
Just in connection with the ones, chat at the moment, I think that in order to protect the record, we should disable the ability of members of the public to use the chat function.
Thanks, Ralph, yes, I just sent a reminder that everybody in the attendees group will be given a chance to speak once the public hearing is open, so to please raise these questions directly with the board, and if Almsy Media, if you're able to change that functionality for now, that would be appreciated.
Is there, thank you. Is there anyone else on the board with questions before we open this to the members of the public who wish to join us?
Yeah, it said Papazian, I just asked, Liz, you requested dogwood, I don't know if dogwood, the reason they died is because there's a dogwood disease in Westchester, so I would ask if indeed that was true, that the, I was gonna say insured, that the applicant work with you if indeed there is dogwood blight to replace them with something that's similar.
Absolutely.
They can't get a resistant.
Maybe there is, so.
Want dogwood trees that have had their COVID-19 shots.
They're not old enough. Anybody else from the planning board? And Rob, could you invite members of the public who wish to join us?
Certainly, Ralph. Okay, at this point, anybody in the attendees group who wishes to speak, please use the raise your hand function, that'll let us know that you wish to make a statement. We will go in the order, I guess that shows up on my screen, so it's no particular order, so please don't feel that we skipped over you. So right now I see that there are two hands raised, so we'll start momentarily, you can also alternatively send emails to the town board public QC account, that's publicqc@townamamaronecny.org. So we're gonna start with Ms. Hillary Mock. Hillary, please let us know once your microphone is established.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I didn't know if, I can't tell from the map whether the trees in question that were being discussed before that have X's through them, I thought perhaps those might be the three cherry trees, is that, are those the trees we're discussing?
There are three, three trees along the wall that are staying, the other tree, there's one cherry along the wall here, and then the two others that are close to the house and the drains.
Okay, the trees I'm referring to, there are three in a row that are actually on Mountain.
Right, those are staying.
Those are staying, well, that's, that's good news, thank you.
They were always staying.
Rob, anyone else?
Okay, next we have Ms. Catherine Sensibog, we're going to enable your microphone, please let us know once, once you can speak.
Hi, thanks so much for doing this. So I had two questions, one was about the retaining wall, I wanted to know how high that will be, if it's gonna be changed, I'm concerned about that house that's around the corner that has the retaining wall that's probably about, I think about eight feet high, I'm worried that that's gonna happen. And then my other question is, is in the planning with the new driveway, I'm concerned about the change of the stop sign, that stop sign was put in because a child was killed, and that's the reason why that stop sign is there, and that is on a street that comes from a big hill going straight down into Rocking Stone, and even with our kind of busy winter this year with all the ice, cars had problems stopping right there, so I'm just concerned about where the place, you know, that stop sign's gonna be, or if you're gonna put a crosswalk, just to make sure that everybody is safe there. I can't really visualize how that, that new driveway's gonna work and also at that intersection, because it is a highly used intersection by pedestrians, because people can't walk on the other side of the street of Rocking Stone to come up the hill from the train, everybody comes on that side because there's not a sideways, sidewalk all the way up on the rest of the park. And I feel really bad doing this, but my friends are gonna get my answers, but I actually have a Columbia University student that I need to go teach, by FaceTime, so, and I'm, thank you for doing this, but I just wanted to make sure that my question got, and my friends will tell me what happened. Thank you so much.
Okay. Elliot, you know the answer?
Thank you to my neighbors.
Yeah, so the answer is, as far as the wall is concerned, there are no changes to the wall, except for the wall where the driveway is being removed, and that wall's gonna be five feet tall, and we're gonna use the same stone that they're removing from the two walls on the side of the driveway, that's gonna be used to build that wall, and a little piece of wallet in front of the stairs there. No other wall is gonna be changed in height or material. As far as the stop sign relocation, it's up to the traffic department, if they want us to move it or not, we left it up to them, they, I think they had left it open at the traffic committee presentation, that they were gonna look at it at the time, the existing stop line that's there and stop sign does not interfere with our driveway, and we should be able to turn around a car in a drive, in this driveway to go out straight, so we should be able to see up and down the road. We had pictures last time or during, I don't know if it was here, but at the traffic board of sight lines from this vantage point up the street, it was very long distance, and the traffic committee had approved, I guess essentially approved the location.
Wanted to add on to the engineer's statement that the final location of the stop bar and stop sign will be established prior to the issuance of a highway department permit, that essentially that, you know, we will pick the location that offers the best sight distance prior to the intersection this way, it maintains a safe pedestrian crossing, and is, still provides visibility for drivers at the intersection.
Okay, Rob, is there anyone else from the queue?
Yes, up next we have Ms. Hillary Mock. Ms. Mock, please let us know once your microphone is set up.
Oh, I had, I had asked my question already.
Oh, sorry, the hand was still raised, okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry, no problem, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Judy Herbst, please let us know once your microphone is established.
Okay, I think I'm muted.
We can hear you.
Okay, terrific, hi everyone, Judy Herbst, I live at 76 North Chatsworth Avenue, across the street from the property, and I did ask the question, so thank you for reading it from the chat, but I will ask it again here, is if you can explain those three trees on the corner of Rocking Stone and Mountain, they add directly to the canopy, that is so beautiful in our neighborhood that I look out every single day for the last 30 plus years, so I am concerned, I understand with the one tree, you did explain in a little bit more detail, but their other two are on the Coltech, and that, those two trees really do concern me because the Coltech is a manifestation of the house and the architecture and the new design, and they, that can be amended. So I'd like to know, really, the arborist's take on those other two trees that are sitting in the middle of your Coltech, and why we really need to remove two beautiful trees?
I'm not an arborist, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that for the record, I do have some training, but the reason for the, for the design and the location of the drainage system, and that would be an engineering issue where, you know, locating the drainage systems on the site, and the one tree, there was a cherry, it was, it was very, very decayed, it may not be that obvious from the sidewalk, but if you were looking at it at a different angle, you would see the decay.
So there's really nothing to be done to save those two trees, it just, it really does break my heart to lose those. It just, it really does break my heart to lose those trees that add and enhance the canopy of our neighborhood. Nothing will grow there to that extent in my lifetime again. And the cul-de-sac, as I said, is a piece of architecture. It's building. It can be moved and a piece of property, the house can be adjusted. That cul-de-sac doesn't have to destroy the trees, is how I see it. And I really would ask you to relook at that to see how you can readjust these plans to save the trees. All I see now around my neighborhood are houses being torn down and the trees being torn down. And I do appreciate this opportunity to bring our attention. These trees on this particular lot enhance this entire neighborhood that had been called and still is right now known as Larchmont Woods. And it would be nice if we can maintain the Larchmont Woods that we all live in.
Number four.
Can the cul-de-sac be relocated?
The cul-de-sac, that's the lowest natural grade in that area that we are draining to. If we put them someplace else, they'll be at either a higher elevation and won't be able to take care of the front of the property. Or we put them farther up, you know, towards Wildwood, which would then affect the other three, the other four trees that we're saving. So it has to be 10 feet off the house and 10 feet off the property line. Even if we get more property, we can move it closer to Rockingstone, but that would still be over those trees or under those trees.
If I was reading the landscape plan against the arborists, all three of them seem to have some kind of problem. The 36-inch oak has a broken crown and is in poor health. The six-to-eight inch cherry is stunted and leaning. And the 12-inch cherry has extensive basal decay and a cracked stem. And that's just using numbers one through 16 on his against the numbers on the landscape plan. So it sounds like the three of them have some issue.
Yes.
We're looking at numbers four, number nine, and number 13. All three of them have some kind of issue.
Yes.
So are the trees that are being proposed to replace them, are there anything to replace that corner of the canopy?
There are three trees that are remaining on the corner along Mountain.
Now, I see those three remaining. They're low, they're not really the high canopy that you see. Is there anything being planned in that corner to build a canopy again?
But you couldn't plant a tree on top where the cul-de-sac systems are. There'd be a lot of water and you wouldn't be able to plant there. It could damage the system.
Is it, Elliot, is it not feasible or not practical or impossible to install the cul-de-sac and leave the trees, or at least some of them, in place?
No, I don't believe it is. There's not a lot of room there. And that's the lowest part of the property.
They would suffer too much root damage.
Yeah.
Hey, what?
We'd have to be 30, 25 or 30 feet away, which would then impact on the other trees.
Well, I, but not those trees.
Right. It's either these trees that, you know, one or two of these trees that are going to come down or those trees that are going to come down.
What I'm really asking is, could you put the cul-de-sac in? If the trees survive, fine. If they don't, they don't.
I think that the arborists, they already said that they have, you know, root damage. We can go back and look at it. I don't think we want to. Like I said, 30-inch tree, this tree is leaning towards the house already, and I don't know if anybody's going to want. Because if you're digging around those roots, it's going to weaken that side and it's going to fall, you know.
Leave that one aside because if it fell, it would fall on the house. What about the other two?
Well, this one was the original one that Liz had asked us to remove because it is very damaged and rotting. And the other one is certainly much closer to the house than the bigger one. I think that one's a small.
Well, can you put another tree in the one that we just looked at right there next to the stone wall? Put another tree there. You're not on the cul-de-sac.
Well, the problem with putting a tree there is I always worry about its weight on the wall. And as it grows, you're going to undermine, you know, you're going to push that wall over and then that's, you know, a further problem. I mean, I don't know if you can fit something in here on this side because it would be very close to the other large trees. So I'm not really sure that there's a lot of space in there to add additional trees. If Liz, if we meet out on the site and Liz thinks that we can get something in, I'll, we'd be happy to plant an additional tree. But I just don't know where personally, not being an arborist again, where it can go in this area.
Yeah, I walked the side. I don't think that planting something in that location is a good idea.
Well, I thank you all for considering, looking at that corner again and looking at it and taking the time.
Thank you. Rob, anybody else?
Okay, next up, we have, I'm not sure if this is a abbreviated name, but Parolee McKinney. Please let us know once you're all set up. Parolee.
Parolee McKinney, I'm right across the street. Thank you so much for your care. We really do appreciate all of you on the planning board for caring about the trees. Thank Liz. So my concern is about the cul-de-sac that's on the right, more on the right side of the property near Wildwood. When they dig the cul-de-sac, will that damage the roots of those very large oaks that are on the, you know, that are nearby? That's my one question. And my other question is also about the big oak that's on the other corner of Mountain and Rockingstone. I don't know if that's the one that Liz is saying was rotting or had a damaged crown. But it does provide a lot. It's really the only big tree. There's some cherries and then the dogs of woods that are planted will be smaller trees. But it's really the only big tree in that area. So if there was some way, even not where it is currently, but behind the cherry trees, if there was some way to have another, like another oak there, a pin oak, maybe, we would really appreciate it.
That's what we were saying would not be a good location for another tree.
I mean, maybe there's some place, you know, nearby, if it's even back closer to the, you know, where the, to, you know, where the current driveway is in that space off of Mountain, like, you know, to the left of the house, to the left of the cul-de-sac as it comes around. Would there be a place there?
You could probably possibly put one in where the driveway was. What do you think about that, Elliot?
Where the driveway was.
Right, after you're filling in the driveway, could you put a tree in that area?
I would say, you know, well, what do we have? We have 30 feet to the house. I mean, we could maybe put in something halfway back. I don't like, I don't like these trees against the wall. I don't like planting a new tree against the wall. But maybe we could do something halfway, halfway up the driveway, so to speak, or halfway between the house and the driveway. It's 30 feet, so 15 feet off the property line.
Where's your sewer service and everything?
The sewer is here. And the water is in that driveway area. We can see that the services are going to be in that area because it's easy to, you know, easy is to dig where we're going to put fill. I don't know.
Elliot, how about in the area where the word rigid is? I think it's rigid.
I didn't hear you.
In the area where the word rigid, I think that's what.
A rigid in here. Yep, well.
It might be feasible, Elliot, to shift the cul-de-sac maybe a couple feet further north because, you know, you would still have sufficient space to that larger, I guess, oak along the Rockingstone frontage. You also free up some space on that side.
Yeah, I mean, we may be able to put something where this at sign is. In here, below the G, something on this end of the driveway, the existing driveway, that may be possible.
That's what I mean, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I mean, we're open.
So Elliot, why don't you and Liz work that out so we can move on?
Great.
Thank you so much. And also, Elliot, what about the cul-de-sac on the right side? Is it still going to be there?
Yes, the cul-de-sac here about a driveway is going to be there. That's to take about water from the driveway, the lowest point of the driveway. It's pretty far from this tree, so that should not affect the roots of this tree at all.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, anyone else?
Yes, we have one more hand raised. Okay, Deborah, please let us know once you're ready to speak.
Hi, this is Deborah. Thanks for meeting with us and taking into consideration the tree removal. I just had a question. I don't even know if we have any control over this. But I do see that the house is planning on being a hard plank white color siding. Is, can that be painted or is that going to be white? Because now that the house won't have any canopy of trees and the whole area around here is more earth tone because we do have some green and some old houses. I'm just curious if any thought can be put into the color scheme of the house so it doesn't look similar to the house on two Wildwood, which is also just a big white house without any trees across the street from that. I'm afraid that cookie cutter design, I believe it's the same builder for both properties, if I'm not mistaken. I just don't want this to start looking like a little town in Long Island where every house was built the same time and all white and no distinction. So is there any chance that that could be changed or no? Or considered maybe by the buyer, if they want to go with a white house?
Just to be clear, the planning board has no controls over the color of houses.
Elliot, what is your role? I'm curious about Elliot, if he's in.
I'm just a site engineer. I have nothing to do with the architecture.
Yeah.
Okay, in other words, the request could be conveyed, but there is nothing the planning board could do if they wanted to paint it purple or any other color.
I understand.
Rob, is anyone else?
Sorry, I was muted. We have two more hands raised, or sorry, one more. Threeschakamo, please let us know when you're ready to speak.
But nobody here wants it to look like Long Island.
Just before you go on, while they're coming on, as I asked the builder if it can be darker, and he said it can, so.
Good news.
Hi, this is Perry Jacomo speaking. I just had a thought. I understand the constrictions with these building sites and some trees are not in good shape and people in our neighborhood are really concerned about the trees and the canopy. This is just a thought, thinking outside of the box to address the neighbor's concern. So across the street from this property, right where Rockingstone and North Chatsworth kind of meet, there's a triangle where a very large, I think it was an oak tree, came down over this last winter in a storm or spring or whenever it was. Maybe since you're part of the planning board, we might consider planting some more trees in that area where there's no house. The big tree came down, and maybe that would be a way to compensate to introduce another tree or so into the area. Just a thought thinking outside of the box.
One of your neighbors has graciously donated the cost of a replacement tree for that island.
So there will be a tree.
Yes. And we've chosen.
You got what you wanted before you even asked.
Is she still on? Perry, do you remember we chose oak or an elm? Oh, we have to allow her to speak. One of the, the woman who has her hand up can answer what kind of tree we chose.
Sure. Hold on, let me bring her back in, Liz.
Hi, hi, this is Perry. Yes, Liz, I believe we chose an oak, a scarlet oak.
Right, it was an oak for that location. Okay.
Yes, and then actually, there are going to be some street trees in front of my house too, right, Liz? Princeton Elms.
Right, we're looking at elm trees in front of your house.
So yeah, we're really trying because Rockingstone doesn't really have many street trees left. So we are trying, you know, to get some more. So Liz, would that be done, do you think, this spring, the town tree?
Definitely.
Thank you. Rob, anyone else?
Okay, I do see that Judy Erbst has raised her hand again. I will enable her again. Nope, never mind. Okay, ask the attendee group one more time. Does anybody, Judy has her hand raised again. Judy, can you hear us?
Oh, I can hear you. I was going to suggest the same thing. So thank you so much for the Central Island because I think that is a great location to think about planting trees. So I am just applauding everyone for putting a tree there and thanking Perry because she is paying for it and donating it to the town because that was the big tree that came down in the last storm. And that's wonderfully and greatly appreciated. Does that island only can have one more tree? Or is there opportunity for other trees in that section, do we believe, or it can't have anymore?
It's possible maybe to put another one in. There is some drainage underground there that we would have to be, stay away from.
So maybe that is, gives us an opportunity in that island to add the additional trees there to kind of balance the corner of Rockingstone and Mountain that's coming down.
Yes.
I would be very interested if there is another tree that could be available there to look into that. If you think a tree could fit there.
Ms. Erbst, are you offering to be the benefactor of the town?
Possibly, or I'll take up a treasure trust from the neighborhood. Perry and I have been talking about adding trees to the neighborhood for quite some time, so.
A GoFundMe for the island.
A GoFundMe for Larchmont Woods.
We have a town tree fund.
Absolutely. We support it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Rob?
All right, I don't see any further hands raised in the attendee group. Liz, has anybody submitted any emails to the public QC account?
Check one more time, but no, we have no new emails.
And we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Almost.
Second.
Second.
Favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing is closed. Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the draft resolution, which was prepared, you know, and the possibility that we got this far?
While you're reviewing it, Francine, can you confirm that all the required referrals have been made pursuant to the site plan loss? Thank you.
Okay, I have some modifications I would propose to make to what you've seen. And what, one is in paragraph 15 on page five, where I think the word then, T-H-E-N, should be added before applicable. And the other relates to paragraph sixteen A and B. Which is to uh remove the language uh which is in red, at least in the draft that I've seen, I assume it's red in everybody's draft. Since the concept is that the uh developer will acquire title to the property from the town. And uh, has been given in the wording that we have there, a substantial amount of time to get that done. Since he won't be getting a certificate of occupancy or completion for at least a few more weeks. Does anybody else have any other proposed revisions to the draft that were circulated? Or have any problems with it or desire any changes to it? Okay, uh, then.
So then I'll, I'll remove the references to the, to the easement and it will only contemplate a sale.
Correct. So, which is also the beginning language in, in the B paragraph. So we'll start the applicant or its successors.
Yes.
Okay. Um, have a motion to adopt the draft resolution as proposed?
All move.
Wait, wait, one second, one second. Um, two, two questions. One is, um there was just a discussion about adding an additional oak tree.
Oh, yes.
That Liz and Elliot were going to discuss, so perhaps, um, let's see, there's a, there's, I think it's paragraph, um paragraph twelve talks about tree removal, tree protection and landscape planting, so maybe we'll add an A that um, adding, you know, specifying an additional tree um to be planted. We'll just talk generally to the ta, and to the satisfaction of the town planner, environmental planner.
Well, they'll consult on it. There's no commitment at this point. They're only consulting.
Okay, well then if they're just consulting, then um, then perhaps the language as it is and number twelve is sufficient.
Right, they're just looking at it right now.
Okay, so, uh, I have a motion to adopt a slightly modified draft that's been circulated. Yes, no, nobody?
What's the modification, Ralph?
The modification was to add the word then in paragraph fifteen before the word applicable. And to remove the reference to easement in uh sixteen A and the introductory language to the extent title to the additional parcel is conveyed in sixteen B. Uh, so that it simply deals with the acquisition of the property from the town.
The purpose of the then is to differentiate from the time of the adoption of the resolution to.
Exactly, because we don't know what the town will do as to a moratorium.
Well, I have no objection to adding the word, but uh any rock removal to be done would have to be in accordance with the then applicable requirements. It's sort of tautology, but I have, well.
Anybody else? I'll try again. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt?
I've tried four times, oh well.
I'm sorry, I didn't, oh, I, so you're making the motion, thank you.
All moved, so moved, so moved, so moved.
So we all adopted four times. Second, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Done.
And then, uh, just as a quick, um, housekeeping, Liz and Rob, just to confirm that the revision dates are in fact the latest revised dates of the plans listed on page one is just to, before this gets sort of, just confirm that.
Will do, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is sixty eight Sherwood Drive. Excuse me, that is also the continuation of a public hearing.
Okay, well, the applicant team for sixty eight Sherwood confirmed that everyone who's supposed to be in the panelist group is here.
Yeah, you're mo, uh, you're moving, Miss Sisso.
And that's Steve So here.
Steve So.
Yes, Steve Marcusani here and um, Rob, is there a Dan uh from Hudson Engineering there?
Oh, yes, yes, I do see Dan in here. I'll move him in. Steve, is there a, is Tony also with your team as well?
Yes, Tony Rizzo, yes.
Great. Okay, I think that's everybody.
Okay, uh, who would like to speak for the group?
Okay, I will start. I do a share screen. Uh, do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so um, we had a revised stormwater report. And we added some uh cul-de-sacs to the, to the existing, uh, well, not to the existing, to the previous um, amount. And, and also indicated elevations uh that the engineer was looking for. And then, let's see, we gotta view this. And then as far as for the setting of the, the modular, our crane area is going to be here. The, the the, the sections of the house are going to be stored, not stored, but they'll be off-site and brought in one at a time, set, and then the truck will leave. And we'll have a police officer there to uh help with any traffic issues.
Off-site as in where roughly?
Uh, Tony, you want to help me with that one? Is Tony there?
Uh, Tony's in our panelist group, but it shows that he's still muted.
Well, if he can hear us, Tony unmute.
Well, I think it's safe to maybe all be.
I'm very sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, this is Tony Rizzo. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the builder for the project and I'll be supplying the modular homes. What we typically do in a situation like this, when we have such a narrow street, is we're trying to move the crane so that it's on, on the property as much as possible. You see that area in front? That's a, that's crossed out. That's a, gonna be a temporarily excavated area so that we can bring the crane in uh to try and get it off the street as much as possible. Then we store the boxes off-site in another location. We have several drivers that will be bringing them in one at a time. And uh, we'll have a police officer there, as Steve said, in the event that we run into any sort of uh uh, traffic issues, which I don't anticipate having.
I, I think the chairman had a question whether off-site meant outside the boundaries of the town of Amerenick or something else.
Uh, it's, it's possible that it might be outside. We're not sure yet, but we've also, we'll have to secure a, a location and we may pay a, a local uh business to keep them there overnight, supplying them with our insurances and stuff as we've done before in the past.
But in any case, they will not be stored on any street, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct. And for everyone's information, the town does not allow for any equipment or um tools to be stored on the towns right away in the overnight hours, so that would not be approved as, as part of a permit.
Okay, now a question regarding the uh, the crane. Is the, I don't know whether tests have been done in the area where, which is supposed to be excavated for it. But uh, can that be excavated without mechanical rock removal?
Uh, we're not sure, but we believe it can be because there is a retaining wall there. And uh, I have to believe that uh, there is a significant portion of that area that had to be filled when they did that uh wall. We don't know for sure. But I'm, I'm counting on that.
Okay, but then, well, just again, so you're aware that the moratorium that is in effect, which applies to you too?
Yes.
But over and beyond that, is the question of whether a portion of this crane is going to stick out into the street?
Um, in the event.
Because it's a, it's a very narrow street.
Yes, it, it is. And if it does, we will make sure that there is enough for an emergency vehicle to pass. And that's another reason we're going to have the police officer there.
Okay. So in reality, just to be clear, you're planning to dig this out uh and to put the crane there, but you don't know what is under the ground that you're going to have to dig out.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't understand that. Any clarification? I mean, you're putting the crane on the property. What happens if you can't dig, number one? And number two is if there's a town ordinance that says the crane cannot be on the street, then therefore, any portion of the crane can't be on the street overnight. So that's clear, if I interpret the town ordinance correctly.
Well, we don't intend to keep the uh crane overnight onsite. This is a, a four-box house, which is typically set in an eight-hour period. Uh, so the crane would be onsite in the morning and leaving, uh going back to their yard and yonkers and the, you know, in the late afternoon.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. That, so, you know, obviously, it's, it's become pretty common with tree removal that we often see cranes in the town. So in those cases, we ask that the applicant submit a, a MPT, which is a maintenance of, protection of traffic plan. That would identify if there's a, a lane closed on a local road like this, we'd probably just have the one police car with the uh police there for added traffic support, but ultimately the crane would be removed at the end of the day.
Also, uh, excuse me, if um, if we are, if the crane does protrude into the street a little during the course of the set, uh, I believe it will be necessary for us to obtain a street obstruction permit from uh, from the building department or the, the powers that be. And have the police officer there as well.
That's correct, that would be a highway permit.
Not be there overnight.
And the uh, sec, my second question as far as if you can't dig, does that prevent the crane from being there?
It doesn't prevent the crane from being there, it just, uh, we have to, um, unfortunately, we would have to get a, a smaller crane. And what that does is it means that we have to be a little more creative. We have to drive it up on top of the property and set it up there. Now, if, if there's a rock situation, I'm very comfortable with setting the crane up, up on top. Um, but if we remove, all we'll need is to remove, if there's rock based on the elevation of that wall, if we can get down uh from front to back, uh, if we can grade up maybe three feet, grade down from, you know, from, from the top of the foundation down, we can set the crane in because we can put the outriggers on, on dunage to bring it up level. So it doesn't have to be perfectly level and street level all the way in.
Yeah, understood. Um, tell me, uh, and thank you for that answer. Uh, tell me, uh, who play, pays for the uh police officer?
We pay for the police officer.
Very good, thank you.
Right answer. Hey, does anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay, this is a continuation of a public hearing. Rob, anybody from the public uh raising hands?
Okay, um, at this point, anybody who's in the attendee group, please use the raise your hand function if you wish to speak. We'll let you, we'll let you speak one at a time. You can also send emails to the town's public QC email account. That's public QC at townamarenickny.org. Rob, at this time, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
Francine, can you confirm uh whether all required referrals were made pursuant to the site plan law?
All required referrals, come in.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
All moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Hearing closed. Uh, we have again prepared a draft of a resolution. Uh, I want to make clear two provisions in it so that the applicant is aware of them, which are paragraph sixteen and seventeen. Uh, I'll read, I'll read them. Except as expressly authorized and advanced and in writing by the town engineer, no construction-related vehicles shall be parked on, nor shall any construction-related materials be placed on Sherwood Drive at any time. That applies day and night. So that it must be, must be kept on the property. The cars can be parked on the driveway of the park, of our trucks. But given the narrow streets, we cannot have uh vehicles parked there even during the workday. Uh, there is parking on the corner on Wyand Street. Uh, so subject to village, that's the Village of Larchmont, so subject to their parking regulations, people could potentially park there. Uh, the other seventeen is that the applicant shall submit a final crane rigging and material staging plan intended for the delivery of the modular units to the satisfaction of the town engineer in connection with the issuance of a town highway department permit. Okay, just so everybody's aware. Uh, members of the board, uh, have you had a chance to review the draft resolution? And does anybody have any changes that they want to make to it? I personally have only one, which is the same as the one before. It's in paragraph fifteen.
Then.
Excuse me, the word then, Ira's favorite, before the word applicable.
Mr. Chairman? In the whereas clause that identifies the uh plans that were submitted, Mr. Marcusani's name is misspelled in two places.
Oh. Okay. Francine, you, you can fix that, right? Or Lisa? I guess Lisa, you have it on your machine.
Yeah, we'll get it fixed.
Okay, subject to those two, uh, can have a motion to adopt the draft resolution?
All moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Done, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Francine, I got that as Ira and then Ron, is that what you have? Thank you.
Okay, item three on tonight's agenda, which is not yet an open to public hearing, is Seven Highland Road.
Chairman, I made a note the last time this was on, I guess for consideration, that at least in my packet, there was no deed. I don't know if that has been supplied.
Look at mine.
Okay, welcome Paul Fusco. Paul, is there anybody else from your team joining us?
The owner, Charles Green.
Okay.
Ira, I'm sorry, I was transferred over to being a, a participant or a panelist when you were mentioning you had a note from the last meeting. Did that have a reference to something?
Uh, my packet didn't have a copy of the deed. I don't know if it's just an omission in my packet, omission or submission.
Okay, it has been submitted. I believe Rob has had copies, so I'm not sure if.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, Ira, there's actually a copy, I think, posted um on the town FTP site with the application materials if you need to uh download it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and, and the grantee on the deed matches the applicant on the application. Is that correct?
Thanks.
From R and yes.
Thank you. Okay. Speak, please.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Um, I know we spoke last week to present, or last month to present the project and this month we're moving into a public hearing, so I'll be generally brief with their overall concept, but definitely describe the plan. I'll share my screen now for you. So, so as, as you all know, we're here for a wetlands and water course permit. The existing property is on the corner of Highland and the property line is here. We are, the existing wetlands is right on the back edge, the rear property line. Um, so the one hundred foot wetlands setback is right runs through relatively the middle of the house. So all the proposed work in the rear falls within the wetland buffer and that's why we're here today. Um, the proposed work includes a pool, patio, uh, stepping stones to access it as well as um, resurfacing of the existing driveway with a previous paving material. The proposed mitigation planting, we feel is extensive. Uh, it's a combination of onsite and offsite plantings of two thousand five hundred square feet of what of existing manicured lawn that's going to be converted into native wetland vegetation to reestablish the area into a positive wetland environment. The uh, wetlands, the existing woodland edge is this back edge here, which is roughly fifteen feet off of the fifteen feet off of the rear property line. And this is an existing town-owned property that has been manicured for a previous owner for significant period of time, um, sixty, seventy years, uh, managed as a lawn, um, area. So as part of this application, we are proposing wetlands planting um, on the property as well as revegetating the initial disturbed area. The homeowner has agreed and in discussions with Liz's proper plant material as well as a one-year guarantee on the material to make sure things are established and are successful for a long, for the long period. As mentioned, let me go up here. We are proposing a nineteen by seventeen pool that is max depth of five feet and starts out of just about three. Uh, we have a shallow depth pool, small location. It's actually being raised uh, one foot above the existing elevation as well. Um, there is a small section or there's some ledge on the property in this corner and that's some of the reasoning person for the client's use, um, is the shallow depth, but also why we're lifting it, um, to help mitigate any possibility of the pool interacting with the ledge. Um, so we have the shallow end closest to the ledge and the deep end farther away. Um, the patio's on grade. I'm sorry, it's lifted a foot above the existing grade. Does not have any footings or would not be interacting with the ledge. We have stepping stones here and have been highlighted for, there's a drainage system that we've worked with your town engineer and everything has been designed to account for the proposed additional coverage on the property. Leave, that's basically overall scope of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know last meeting was um, no, no particular questions had come up, but happy to answer any of.
Let me ask one, at the meeting of with coastal zone, uh, that resulted in a request for a, a greened, a pool fence should be attractive from the perspective of the trail, which is the conservation area. Uh, has that been worked out with coastal zone or with anybody?
Uh, we had proposed and we're labeling it as a, a split rail fence. So it's a, a wood split rail fence that is being proposed. Believe it's on the pool plans, which I'm not bringing up, but that's a two-rail split rail fence with a wire mesh.
That is proposed as a fencing for the pool itself?
Correct. On, on the, on this rear property line and on the side property line. Yep. Any visible areas to the.
Okay, so the intent is to fence that entire area.
Correct. Yes.
Uh, Liz, uh, A- Achenston, is, does that fit the coastal zone management committee, commissions concept so far as you know?
Yeah, that, that sounds, it sounds like that would be fine. Um, just, yeah, curious if it meets the requirements for the building, you know, building department, but you know, they'll have to.
Yeah, it'll be a, a split rail fence and then on the exterior will be a, a wire mesh that will meet all opening and, and hold requirements for New York State pool fence enclosure. So yes.
Yeah. Unobtrusive.
It blends in nicely with the plant material that'll be there. It'll almost, um, within a few years be invisible.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions? And may have a motion to open the public hearing, please. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, is there any member of the public who, uh, is potentially interested in speaking? Rob?
Hey, once again, anybody in the attendees group who wants to speak on this application, please use the raise your hand function. I do see one hand raised this time. Michael Letros, please let us know once your microphone is connected.
Ray, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Michael Letros and uh, my family and I live at twenty-eight Rockland Avenue, which is the uh, rectangular, uh, property just to the left of, of this plan. Uh, we're next door neighbors to the applicants and they've been exceptional neighbors, wonderful people. The issue that we wanted to raise tonight is, is our concern that any potential excavation of the pool could cause, could, could really, or could cause in the jackhammering of rock, which we believe could has a risk of, of damaging our house. I just wanted to present a few brief facts. One is our particular property, that rectangle is on, uh, is on bed, is on rock. In fact, at least half of our basement, um, is a crawl space that's built on exposed rock. Uh, we have visible outcrop on our lawn and, and in fact, our street is appropriately named Rockland Avenue. Um, and we live in close proximity, as you can see from this diagram here, to where the pool is being planned. Um, the final fact I just wanted to raise is we live in a ninety-five-year-old Tudor, which given its advanced age, we feel is kind of fragile and could be susceptible to damage. Uh, should there be any, uh, jackhammering or, or excavation of rock? Um, so given these above facts, you know, we wanted to ask if it's reasonable to require the applicant as part of this permit, um, i- if they do encounter any rock that requires jackhammering or extensive excavation, um, that we were requesting two things. One, the applicant could hire an independent third party and licensed structural engineer uh, at their expense to inspect, monitor the house before, during, and after the excavation period. And if that report point two is if a report determines any damage been caused by any potential excavation of rock, again, which we believe is probable, um, that any expense for repairs would be performed by the applicant. Quite frankly, you know, if those terms can be satisfied, we'd be very pleased to to support, you know, the applicant and the peaceful use and enjoyment of their home. Um, they've been great neighbors, but we just want to have this concern addressed.
Have you discussed that with your neighbors?
We have raised this, yes.
And is there less than full agreement?
Uh, we, we don't have agreement to, to the two points that I stipulated. Um, again, at the, at issue is whether is, is there really rock underneath here that needs to be excavated? And clearly, if it's just soil and requires just standard soil, you know, excavation, um, then we have no issue with that. It's just, um, our suspicion or based on the facts outlined that there is substantial amount of rock on our property, we're adjacent to it, and we think it's a high probability there's rock there. And we just want to avoid any, any risk and damage to our property. Otherwise, we want to fully support what they're doing for the peaceful enjoyment of their home.
Well, I, I believe, um, if I understand the concerns you're, uh, identifying, that if the circumstances, uh, were to be such as your concern, a rock removal permit would have to be applied for and granted by the town. And first at the moment, there's a moratorium until I believe June, but uh, then the rock removal, uh, statute has been amended, uh, but I believe even as so amended, the the guaran- the, the safety, let's call it the, the mitigation issues you've identified are incorporated in that law. So the good, the good news is that uh, there won't be rock. The better news is if there is, your concern should be addressed.
The question of our council. Lisa, is there a reason, because this is wetlands and water courses only, that the language that we normally include in our resolutions, which deals with this very issue, uh, is not included in the draft that has been circulated?
Um, there's no reason. It's not currently part of the template and we would need to, before imposing it as a condition, there would need to be, um, a legitimate reason to impose it. I would also want to hear if Rob has handy what, what the proposed law or its adopted law for rock removal. Um, because I think it was drafted to be exactly consistent with what our now boilerplate rock removal provisions say.
Actually, it's not. And I can tell you from what I was sent from the town, uh, it is not fully consistent with what we do. And what the planning board typically does is, uh, more protective than what the town adopted. And in fact, deals specifically with the questions that were just raised by the neighbor.
I was gonna, Ralph, if it's all right, I was just gonna just jump in on this. Um, so at this point, I don't believe the applicant's designer has identified that any rock removal was anticipated, but you know, obviously, uh, to everyone's point, um, no mechanical rock removal permit could be issued at this point as the moratorium's in place. Um, but I also would not be opposed to uh, carrying over those same conditions that if rock removal were to become necessary based upon further site excavation, that they could still be added, added to these resolution as conditions of approval.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we include them here, if there's no rock removal, they're inapplicable anyway. As it is in every, in every other similar resolution we do.
Right.
So, uh, I would propose to, to our board same language that we use elsewhere in this, uh, potential resolution. Uh, and, uh, thus providing protection if it's, if it's necessary and if it's not necessary, it's excess language.
Well, for the benefit of the applicant and the neighbor, um, I, I think it would be helpful to read that into the record. If the board is considering adopting the resolution tonight, they should know what these conditions say.
Well, do you, do you have the language from one of the others?
I do. I do.
You want to do that then?
Sure. Is that, is it the appropriate time for that or were there, were there any other?
Yeah, are there, are there other people in the queue, uh, Rob?
Um, at this point, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, we should also check the public QC email. Liz, has anybody sent any emails in?
No, no, there are no emails.
Okay.
So Lisa, why don't you proceed, please?
Okay, if there is to be mechanical rock removal subject to the following, as well as any then applicable law and or moratorium. A, to the satisfaction of the town engineer, the applicant shall hire and compensate a professional firm here and after referred to as the professional firm to inspect and record the condition of all structures, including retaining walls adjacent to or across the street from the property prior to the commencement of mechanical rock removal and to monitor and document it. B, within a reasonable time prior to the start of mechanical rock removal, all the owners of such properties and any additional nearby properties recommended by the professional firm shall be contacted in writing by the applicant or the professional firm to arrange a precondition survey to be conducted at the applicant's expense. C, the applicant shall be required to pay the reasonable cost of repairs resulting from damage caused by the mechanical rock removal. D, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion, the applicant shall submit to the satisfaction of the town engineer, all inspection reports related to the mechanical rock removal. E, no mechanical rock removal permit shall be issued unless the applicant has a dust mitigation plan. Okay, that's a different issue, so I'll skip over that. Um, talks about covering, uh, F talks about covering trucks. Um, G talks about suitable drainage means for removal of water and sludge. And H talks about, um, soil or debris piles. So that's, that's that.
What, what portions of, uh, those conditions that, uh, council read are not substantially incorporated into the newly enacted rock removal law?
They're basically, they may call portions are not fleshed out to the extent that we have been doing for years. And, uh, why they're not, that was the town board's decision, obviously not ours. Uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman and Board, I just wanted to make a note from our end. As you know, we're and, and Rob mentioned, we're doing what we can to avoid any ledge. We're clearly aware that there is rock ledge. The homeowner is uh, you know, aware of it for his own house and making, you know, wouldn't want any damage done to that um, as well as expenses, uh, for this. And that's part of where we've designed this pool and of course, it sounds like the way that these provisions would be, whether it's a rock removal permit or not, it would be based on if it's necessary. But on top of that, as you've noted yourself, this is a wetlands permit. So we're looking at what this project is in relationship to the wetlands and mitigation to the wetlands. And if the town has a rock removal permit as well as legislation to protect the neighboring properties, um, it seems like that would probably be sufficient enough. Um, considering we're here today for a wetlands permit and we're focusing on mitigation and protecting the wetlands, um, right off property.
Well, we also do focus on, on, uh, preparation of neighbors, of pre- preservation, pardon me, of mineral and so on. Uh, so, uh, again, if there is no mechanical rock removal, everything that was just read is irrelevant. So if it's, you, you believe that it won't be any, it doesn't matter. None of this has to be done until there's such a time as a decision is made to, uh, that there will be mechanical rock removal and then there's going to be an application for a permit. So, uh, I don't really see the, uh, basis of what you just said. If, if, if it's not going to happen, it's irrelevant. If it is going to happen, it protects the neighbors, including the one, uh, who just spoke, but not limited to the one who just spoke.
Understood completely. And I'm, I'm just clarifying that you're mentioning there's a difference between what the town is justifying for what their rock removal permit and what mitigation would need to take place versus what you guys have outlined in your, your um, resolutions for other site plans, I'm assuming for your site plan approvals. So I, you know, we're not hearing what exactly that is, the exact differences between those two. So um, and maybe it's so minor that exactly it doesn't make a difference, but if there's a, a difference, there, there may be a reason the town had done it that way. And from this application scenario, since we are here for a wetlands, uh, permit and we're talking about, uh, wetland restoration and making sure the wetlands are thriving. You know, the town itself is protecting the homeowners through the rock removal permit process.
Well, the, um, the, the new local law number ten slash twenty twenty is actually available on, on the town's E code page under chapter one oh six. Um, you know, I first glanced through, I think you'll see that the requirements to hire a professional firm and most of the reporting is, uh, substantially the same. There's a, you know, a few minor details that Ralph had alluded to. But, um, you know, it, it does essentially the same work.
Okay, so then it, it probably, it's a, then it's a moot point, I guess. That's, that's fine. I think the big thing is from our end and, and the homeowner's end is, you know, what extent's hiring external, um, engineer or, um, professionals and, and fully servicing and reviewing the neighboring properties, so.
But also keep in mind, you can't even do rock removal till at least the end of June.
Yes, understand completely. And we are, and, and like I said, the design is made to avoid this in all costs and the homeowner's, um, well aware that even if we didn't counter ledge, this project may even not um, happen because of expenses and, and, and work associated with having to remove it. Um, we would first look at alternatives of maybe reducing the depth of the pool or possibly lifting a little higher if, if that's feasible. As well, uh, depending on what may or may not be there. Once we start, um, doing test bits is our first step.
What percentage of the lot area is to be disturbed?
So calculations here. We are disturbing roughly so that's a total. So that's a total disturbance. We are disturbing close to forty-five percent when it comes down to it, I believe.
What, you mean forty percent?
Forty-five percent.
It certainly doesn't look like forty-five percent, but maybe it is.
Of the, of the entire property, that's where you're, where, where, yeah, we're yeah, we're four thousand square feet of disturbance and total lot area is ten percent, so it's a simple forty percent. Ten thousand, I'm sorry, square feet is the total lot area.
So it's only ten percent?
Ten percent.
Let me ask you a question for, for the, the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
It's Ed Papazian. I think what the neighbor is asking, it's on the same ledge. He has close proximity to his neighbor over here, and what he is asking is reasonable, number one. Number two is, we have put this in and it is consistent with the planning board policy to put that wording in as far as my word indemnification. I, I suggest that we keep that wording inserted into any approval process.
I agree with Ed.
As, as, as do I. But I, I, I think Mr. Fusco was raising a slightly different issue, which was whether the conditions that we were discussing here can be triggered simply when the application is for a wetlands permit. Then I'd put that question to our council.
Well, so I think that the overarching purpose of, of the wetlands law does not mimic those of the residential site plan law. But I think that if there's a predicate to, to the condition of imposing rock removal requirements that the planning board does consistently impose and that are substantially similar to the, the new town law, I, I don't feel terribly concerned that this could be construed as perhaps not squarely within the purpose of the wetlands law, because I think that there's enough of a predicate linking the impact to the neighbor. I guess I would have to, I would have to have more clarity on what the differences would be between the proposed town law and what we'd be imposing. But because there's a substantially similar town law, I don't see it as problematic.
Well, seems that we have two possibilities then from what's been discussed. One is that we proceed and, and with a potential resolution this evening, which incorporates the language that we've, which, which was just read. The other is that we postpone this whole thing for a month, during which time council can look into, you know, the issues that were just raised. And then we can consider it at our April meeting.
I, I have a third alternative, Mr. Chairman, to suggest. I thought I heard Mr. Fusco say that if rock removal was necessary, that might cause or likely would cause a reconsideration of the, at least the details of the plan. So I'd be prepared to suggest that we could entertain the wetlands permit with the proviso that we are authorizing, if we do authorize the issuance of the permit, but only provided that the work to be done pursuant to the permit does not involve any mechanical rock removal. If it were required to have mechanical rock removal, then they'd need to come back and seek an amendment of the permit or renew permit.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. I have to think that through because similarly, that may not fit squarely within the ambit of the purpose of the, of the wetlands and watercourses law. So to, to require them to come back. So I think I, I'm more comfortable with, with Ralph's proposal that if the applicant wants to take a month for us to look at this more closely compared against the town law, then that could be a prudent course of action. If the applicant is comfortable accepting the condition that we put pretty much as boilerplate in all site plan resolutions and they want to move forward this month, then I think the board would probably be comfortable moving forward in that, in that way.
So what's the applicant's desire?
I, I, I think our goal is to, considering the only issue or concern or topic that's been brought up is the rock removal, we would love to move forward and get approval at this meeting and not have to wait. That said, understanding the concern and trying to iron out whether you add the boil plate from your site plan approvals for a wetland permit. As mentioned, the rock removal code is controlled and adopted by your town board in the rock removal permit. And as you're saying, if it's incredibly similar, then we would be covered on, or the, the the neighboring homeowners would be covered under that law. That's, you know, so from a sense of, I think that really we could proceed tonight with adopting the added boilerplate or proceed with the plan as is and the resolution as is and understanding that the town board has already adopted legislation to protect the homeowners through the rock removal permit and not needing the boilerplate. That said, it's obviously up to the board. We would like to get approval tonight. And sounding like that, that the same entity from our end, we will have to manage and take care of the neighbors if there is rock removal, which we understand. From my sense as a professional landscape architect doing this for your town and other towns, as going for a wetlands permit, having focused on really, we're talking about mitigation. We're talking about what the wetlands permit is and what the purpose of that. It does seem off track to be adding some of these other contingencies that do not directly reflect what this permit's about. But once again, this is the board's decision. We would love to move forward with the project at this time. And in either option from our end would, I believe, would be, would be, would be fine.
The question in my mind is whether you are waiving on behalf of your clients any objection, legal objection to the board's ability to impose conditions relating to rock removal in the context of your wetlands permit application. Because if you were not, then my vote would be to not consider the resolution and allow council some opportunity to reflect and, and consult so that we are clear in our own minds that we're acting within our authority.
And I guess at a minimum, it's probably prudent to, to the extent that, that they are not one hundred percent the same. We should be able to point out to you exactly what the differences are. And I, I am not in a position to do that right now.
I want to make clear though, that the planning board is not limited in its authority by the code section that the town adopted. It does not preclude the planning board from requiring more. It just precludes the planning board from requiring less.
Yeah, but Ralph, I think the, Mr. Fusco's issue is that because the purpose of the wetlands and watercourses law is aimed to preservation of, you know, habitat and water quality and issues that don't involve rock, that there may be other limits on, in the, in the context of a wetlands permit that would not perhaps be limiting in the context of a residential site plan. It's just something we haven't looked at yet.
No, I understand that. But, I mean, as pointed out, we cannot do this and they come back if they have rock removal problems. We can postpone this for a month to find out what the answer is. Or we can do what I think the applicant is asking for, which is potentially proceed today with the language, with whatever pointed out that's being a waiver of any right to object to the inclusion of the language, because we don't want to do anything that's going to cause anybody problems. And again, since we were told that the hope is there will be no mechanical rock removal, including the language, as long as there isn't any, is totally irrelevant to the applicant.
Understood. Rob, I believe the homeowner is on, is he still with us or?
Uh, yes, I see that Valerie Green, the count, is still in the Zoom as a panelist.
Valerie, if you want to comment, or Charles, I believe you're muted. It looks like if you wanted to comment on accepting the additional.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, you know, my concern with respect, first of all, I, I want to thank Michael for his kind words. I mean, I understand his concerns. He and I spoke in my yard this past weekend and discussed the possibilities of what would be what. And, you know, being that we weren't clear on whether or not there was going to be any rock removal required, and I didn't want to commit to anything without knowing myself what was going to be involved. I told him, look, you know, I'm going to do everything that the town requires me to do. I knew that, you know, in order to chip out rock, we were going to have to get a chipping permit. And I know that the town requires certain protections being taken, you know, to protect neighbors, dust, all those types of things. My concern with respect to what this board is doing is that they are creating requirements that are more expansive than the elected town officials have legislated. And while I'm perfectly willing to accept everything the, you know, the town regulations require, not that I have a choice, and I, I'm, you know, in accepting it, I do accept it. And, you know, that should govern here. While I respect this board, I'm not sure where the authority derives, where they're able to impose conditions that are beyond what the town elected officials have legislated.
Well, the short answer to your your expressed concern in my mind is that this board doesn't issue a rock removal permit. It does other things. And when we know that a rock removal permit will be required because it's in the nature of what the scope of work is that's part of the application, that's when, in our discretion, when it's appropriate, we add supplementary conditions. We certainly couldn't negate any condition that would be in the town law if mechanical rock removal is required.
Mr. Green, to give you some context, like we said, this, these provisions had been developed in the context of site plan review, which did provide, does provide the planning board with authority to impose those conditions. And in fact, I believe that the planning board's provisions actually prompted the town board to revise its own rock removal laws to be consistent because they agreed that the laws pertaining to those applicants for site plan approval should apply also to homeowners that didn't trigger the need for a site plan application. I have not examined the same authority in the wetlands law with respect to rock removal laws. But the chair, as the chair stated, the planning board does have the authority to impose those laws with respect to, you know, certainly with respect to site plan applications and arguably similarly with respect to wetlands applications. It's just that we have not reviewed it in the, in the context of the wetlands chapter at this time.
I would, I would, I'm sorry, Ed, sorry. I think that was Ed. No, it's the homeowner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have no issue consenting to this board imposing whatever the town regulations are with respect to rock, rock removal. And, you know, if you want to read in, you know, that, you know, provision, I have no objection. I'll agree to that and we can close this down tonight, but I will do everything the town requires me to do pursuant to a rock removal permit, that if rock removal has to be done, I will invariably have to request.
Well, with all due respect, you would, you would be required to comply with that, whether we imposed that or not, because it would be.
Of course.
So the, the question is, and, and again, I apologize that I don't have the answer off the top of my head. But the question is, to the extent that the planning board may have the authority to use the town code as a floor rather than a ceiling, you know, we would have to see whether or not the, the wetlands code provides the planning board with that authority if you're objecting to that condition.
I think another time has come to, to end this back and forth discussion. There are two possibilities. One is since four of the five members of the board have already expressed their desire for the five voting members at this point, to include the, the language if a permit is issued tonight with a waiver as proposed, that's one way to proceed. The other way to proceed is we put this off to next month and our council ascertains whether we have the authority in all events to do exactly what we were proposing to do.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that to be nice, pick one. Because this, this is not going to go on for the whole evening. We have more to do.
Mr. Chairman, I feel uncomfortable voting on it tonight. I think council should look at the issue and we should review it next month.
I have no problem with that. What, what are the other people's views?
I'm fine with it being put over another month. So that we can get this determined correctly.
Okay.
Okay, so can we have a motion then to keep the public hearing open for another month and at that, and to ask council to advise us before their next meeting as to what the rules are based that relate to the discussion we've just had.
I will do that. There's no need for a motion to continue the public hearing. It will continue till the April meeting.
Okay, so we will just not close the public hearing and it automatically continues?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to remind the applicant, the sign, there does not need to be another mailing, but the date on this sign posted will just need to be updated with the April date.
And how long before the next hearing need that sign be reposted?
It's, it'll say in chapter 114, I think it's fourteen days.
Or ten days or something.
Yeah, I think, I think that we went through this, that the law on its code has a separate notification requirement, which I think gives ten days as opposed to our typical fourteen. Ralph, I was just going to state that one of the attendees, I think the gentleman who spoke before, Mr. Letros, had his hand raised again.
I'm sorry, let, let him speak, please.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to ask a clarification here. My interest here is to just make sure my rights are protected. If you grant the permit for the wetlands today without any additional language, and if my neighbor, Mr. Green, discovers rock, then he then has to go for a rock removal permit, which that permit would then protect my interests. Am I correct in interpreting that, sir?
No.
Well, he's correct. He's.
I don't think that's.
To some extent, it's correct. It's not the same as what we do here.
It's protected, and the reason I'm saying that is I don't know what he has subjectively in his mind. He seemed to have expressed something in the nature of a full indemnification without need to establish anything. Excuse me? Someone said something? I thought someone said something. So I don't know what's in his mind, and I'm certainly not willing to let him think that we're giving him legal advice about what his rights are.
Right, absolutely. It's not what we do.
Well, I think I, my understanding is that Mr. Letros was saying that if the applicant is simply required to comply with the town law, does that protect Mr. Letros from what he's concerned about in connection with rock removal? And the answer is yes, but perhaps not as much as what the planning board's boilerplate is that we use in our site plan resolutions.
Perhaps not as much as he would like or thinks is appropriate.
You know, just to share it again, so local law number 10 dash 2020 is available on the town code, E code section under chapter 106.
And we're not going to be, we're not spending this evening comparing the two sections.
Now we're not.
Versus the town section. Thank you.
But Mr. Mr. Chairman, just one thought. If, if the reason for imposing additional rock removal conditions is the concern of the neighbor and the neighbor says he's comfortable with the town ordinance, then what's the reason for imposing the conditions?
But he doesn't know what the town ordinance says.
Neighbor has.
Nor does he know what the condition that we would propose says.
Well, no, he does know what.
That's up to him to say.
Right, that's up to, that's up to the neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be a reason to impose additional conditions. And if that's the reason, I mean, look, I'm an engineer, you know, but that, that's my take on it.
The reason for using the language. The reason for using the language we use, which does go a bit before, beyond what the town did, is because the feeling of this board is generally, and has been for several years, that we want to protect to the extent possible, the neighbors who may be harmed by mechanical rock removal. And it is correct, as said before, that the town did use some of our language and some of our concepts in what it adopted, but it did not go further. That does not preclude the planning board from going further. And the plant, if the planning board had no function, other than to tell people they can do what the law says, we wouldn't be here this evening, because that would apply anyway. Uh, so with respect to this, if there's going to be an issue, uh, I think we just leave this, we find out what the authority of this board is, if the authority is not there, at the next, uh, meeting, we will just leave things to what the town does. As to the rest of it, I think our job is to do our job.
Can we allow Mr. Letros to make a decision?
No, but still, I, I don't.
He's not before the board.
No, he's not the applicant. He's simply a neighbor, which is very nice. He's the one who may, may be most affected. But I think that if there's a decision to be made, it's to be made by the applicant. He's the one who's before us.
I am the applicant.
Yes. So if, if your decision is that you are not accepting the language, the way it was proposed by this board with, and not objecting to the fact that we're doing it, we will find out what our legal authority is, and we will meet again at our April meeting.
Mr. Letros had expressed a willingness to go with the town regulation rather than the proposed language.
And Mr. Letros is not this board.
I understand. But he is the sole, sole objector to what's going on here.
But the language that we use does not, is not limited to Mr. Letros. The language in the town law is not limited to Mr. Letros either.
It occurs to me that we did, um, prepare a draft resolution that does have other conditions, and it now would seem wise that, that the Greens and, and the Greens representatives should have an opportunity to review the entire resolution, um, you know, to make sure that, uh, you, you know, it would probably be in, in his interest to do that.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I think that also can be done between now and the April meeting.
Exactly.
Okay. I appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you. We'll see you next month and what, however it comes out, it comes out.
So I just want to confirm that this will be a clarification of the differences between the two rock removal ordinances and how that affects the homeowners, as well as whether you issuing a wetlands permit actually gives the decision to put the rock removal. Is that the distinction?
The second one, not the first.
Okay.
If you want to compare the two, you're free to do so.
It might simplify things, Mr. Fusco, if you could do some test borings.
Yeah, then the whole, I mean, it's actually surprising that you haven't already done them, because then you would know whether this is going to come up or not.
Well, this is, you know, to do some serious tests to get to the depth that we're talking about would be creating a significant amount of disturbance within a wetlands buffer. So as mentioned, we're looking here as a wetlands permit to make sure we're protecting the wetlands.
Touche.
They relied on the previous test, uh, test holes that were done for the drywall system previously, and that was, that was fine.
Yep, we were adequate for the existing drywall system. So that's as the current design, as we are hoping, and we all are hoping, neighbor, the homeowner, and I'm assuming the board, that we don't hit any ledge, but clearly we're at a crossroads here.
Fine, all understood. If there's no ledge, all of this is irrelevant.
Yes.
Or the swimming pool becomes a waiting pool.
Or part of it will be, you know, not as steep as other parts will be. The ledge is only along one edge according to what I saw.
Correct. And that's the shallow edge of the pool.
Right.
But.
All right, I, I will send to you, Mr. Fusco, the, the proposed draft resolution so that we can all be on the same page when we discuss this in April.
Why don't you send it with the language that we were dealing with before, so we can see the whole thing?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is three Cornell Street.
Hey, welcome back, Elliot Senor and Shlomo. Please confirm if anyone else is still in the attendees group who needs to join from your team.
Um, no, I have to, I believe.
Without trying to steal anybody's thunder, the evening is getting long, and it seems to me, based upon what the building inspector reported, there's no reason to go forward with this application.
Well, there's more, there's more to it than that. And just to be clear, what's being referred to is that the present application is not zoning compliant. And it is, uh, the building inspector has so ruled, there is a 15 foot required setback for the pool equipment, not 11 feet. You may remember last month, we discussed the location of the pool equipment. You did put sound barriers around it, but you didn't move it. Uh, and the zoning law is clear as to how close it can be. So if a public hearing was noticed for today, I think despite the hour, there are also other issues that are going to come up, so they may as well at least get raised. And then the question will be, I mean, we can open the hearing, we can't close the hearing because we cannot approve something that's not zoning compliant. Uh, let me just, uh, before our presentation, raise other issues that have happened, uh, that have been raised from our end of things. And that is the plan that we're looking at, at the moment, the left side of the plan does not show anything whatsoever to hold the new bill in place between three and five, because the approved site plan for five Cornell has a setback and, or, and a wall and a line of trees. And until that, uh, site plan is amended in a manner to remove those, the two are not adjacent to each other at the level that you're proposing. So there would have to be, uh, a wall to hold this up, or what would be needed is an application for amended site plan for five by the owner thereof, or agent accepted, appointed by him or them, uh, which also would deal with extending the wall that's between five and Bonnie Breyer, because that wall did not go the whole way because of the area with the setback with the trees. Uh, and then also to clarify, uh, what actually what we're looking at right now, which is the landscaping, because it's unclear to me at least, other than the line of trees, which of the, what looked like bushes between the trees are on three and which are on five. So all of that can be done, uh, together. In fact, uh, it would make sense to do it together. But again, until the pool equipment is moved, we couldn't approve anything anyway.
The last meeting that we had, we discussed the application of five, and you said that because it was a minor, possibly a minor revision, that you were going to leave it up to Rob to determine if it was a minor revision. And we were going to submit to Rob, which we did, the, 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 property without the wall in the middle, all right? And now you're saying that, well, no, now you, and, and that was discussed at the original approval of five, that said that if it's a minor subdivision of revision about removing the wall and about grading across, that you thought it was a minor revision and it wouldn't have to come back to the planning board. And at the meeting, the last meeting on number three, you said, okay, we're going to leave it up to Rob to determine, as I remember, leave it up to Rob to determine if it was a minor revision or a major revision. Uh, and now you're going, I, I, I'm frustrated. Now, the site plan that we have, or the landscape plan that we have, the line going up the middle there is the property line. And this was the graded, the exact approved landscape plan on number five. And this is the proposed landscaping on number three, and nothing's changed other than the wall being removed between the two properties. So I'm, I'm, I, I, I don't know what to say. I, you seem to change things, or I don't understand it right. I don't know. As far as the setback is concerned, um, we never talked about it on the previous meeting about it not meeting zoning requirement. We can move it three feet over or four feet farther over. It doesn't change things. The discussion about the equipment was about how it's going to project noise to the neighbor, and we, we put in the sound, the sound fence. We showed you that it was going to reduce the noise at the property line by a significant amount down to what essentially is a whisper. Um, and, uh, uh, yeah, I, I wish that I understood what it is that you wanted.
Let me just make clear that decisions regarding zoning are made by the building inspector. They're not made by the, by Rob, and they're not made by the planning board. And the building inspector has issued a memo, which you may or may not have received, which says that they, as, as proposed with the pool equipment where it is, it is the application is not zoning compliant. So there are two possibilities. One, you submit a plan that is zoning compliant, and the other is you go to the zoning board of appeals and try to get a variance to leave it where it is.
All right, we are going to make it zoning compliant, um, and that has to do with, uh, that was, we'll certainly move it zoning compliant. But as far as the first item about the common application or the application of five, I'm at a loss there because you keep on going back and forth on what you're going to do. So tell me what it is that you need me to do on, on that, please.
Elliot, so maybe I'll just chime in on this, as my name was brought up a couple of times, although I appreciate the, I guess, the, the trust in me to make a decision. Um, the code does point to both myself and the building inspector. We have to agree that this, that any change to approve site plan would, would qualify as a minor change. After discussing with the building inspector, it was agreed that as staff, that we could not make that finding in this case, as changing the grade on the property would involve additional fill placement and, you know, possibly drainage changes too, depending on how that trade progression is made. So at this point, the board would like to see in an amended site plan application for number five, you know, basically just show the change, whether, I guess, either the removal or the bearing of the wall, whatever you guys propose, and obviously just to adjust the landscaping plan accordingly.
Okay, so it wasn't, it, it, so it just came about that you're talking about this, this amendment. It's not something that happened two weeks ago or a month ago, or, you know, it, because I was not aware that there was anything that was holding that up.
Right. I think, I think that this was, this decision was made just recently in the last week or two, after we received your application showing the changes on five.
But was it the week or two, or was it?
What is, why is any of this relevant to anything? Okay.
Could have had a subdivision in or an amended application in, and, and we would have been able to go through.
I, but what, maybe you should have called the building inspector and asked what the decision had been. It is not their job to come and chase you.
And there's a, um, a deadline for submissions 14 days prior to the meeting. And I, I, my understanding is this conversation took place well after that.
Within the last two weeks, that's correct.
So.
I was not aware. I mean, you say I'm not supposed to chase them about an app, about a decision, but if they're making a decision, um, that I'm not aware of, shouldn't they be sending an email or a memo or something saying, we find you not in zoning compliance?
No, actually, there is a memo which says that it's not zoning compliant. And it's your job to follow up what goes on. It is not their job to go chase you.
Well, did they send me the memo? Did they send me the memo, or is the memo internally?
As far as the public record, it should be on the website.
Yeah, I think it is actually. The memo on zoning compliance was, is dated the 23rd of February, and I think it's been available all the time. So, uh, again, so, sorry.
I don't think this is, I think it's getting too late in the evening, that we're all getting cranky. But, uh, assuming those two issues were resolved, it's only compliant and whatever needs to be done to the site plan. Uh, can the swimming pool be dug without encountering rock?
Yes.
Yes, you comfortable with that?
We're building it in fill. That was one of the, um, the things of the application. It's all in above existing grade.
Okay.
Uh, the existing grade is at 190, and the proposed pool is at 199.5. So it's about nine and a half feet above, and the pool won't be 10 feet deep.
Okay, there also are, there is a memo dated March 4th, uh, from, um, Mr. Oliveri, which raises various other issues. It's also have to get dealt with. Uh, and I would suggest if you don't have a copy of that, you obtain one of those. It's probably also on the website. So there, there's more to it than just what we've been speaking about.
Well, Mr. Oliveri sent me his memo, or somebody sent me Mr. Oliveri's memo yesterday, today. And, uh, that doesn't seem to be, um, very many questions on, on his side of it.
I think he has a significant one regarding the grading of the property toward, on the end toward one, uh, one Cornell.
Yeah, it doesn't actually happen that way. So I can explain that if you'd like. On the, uh, oh, where am I? I'm going to go back to the other plan.
What, what doesn't happen that way?
Well, this, this water, you see, this property is high. You see, these contours are here? That property is higher than our, than our property. So the water doesn't cross the property line if there's these contours are showing that this property, you see, the direction is higher than our property along the property line.
Well, you might want to extend those contours and make it apparent, but you do have, uh, grading towards that wall, which is on the property line. So I think you got to do something there with drainage behind the wall.
Well, the wall is.
Directed down to the bottom. Uh, you need to address it in some way.
All right.
The other side, we also talked about the other side, where it looks like you're directing drainage toward the property line. So.
Well, this, this drainage, this contour, any water run here is going to run down that way, and any water here is going to run down that way, and any water here is going to run down that way. So it doesn't cross the property line.
Well, it will. If you follow those contours, Elliot, it's going to cross the property line. So you've got to either indicate a swell. You, you draw the, the direction of water perpendicular.
To the contour, right.
Right? So draw perpendicular to that contour. No, then it's going to hit perpendicular to the other contour. It is going to cross over the property line. So it's got to be drawn a little more carefully, and it's got to be detailed more carefully with a swell indicated or something. So that, maybe that was your intention, but that's not the way it shows.
Okay.
You know, and, and if, in fact, the land in one is higher than the land in three, please show it as such, so that we will all know that.
But we still, we don't want to concentrate water at the property line, whether it gets to the property line and sits there. Something has to happen with the wall, with water dealing with it. You, you've got a, you know, a slope coming into the top of that wall, that's, those contours get pretty close. So just look at that and, and, and see what you could do to, to, to direct that to a, to a, to a good point.
Yeah, I think one of the points raised too is just about the pool. So we did note, Elliot, that the pool elevation and pool service elevation was lowered by about half a foot, but we also noticed that that 198 contour was extended further towards the rear. So, you know, other than just adding an extra step or two, it doesn't seem like that pool is necessarily dictated that it has to be at that elevation. So I think to the extent that, you know, you can minimize that filling, you know, I think that, I, that should still be pursued.
Rob, is, uh, since there was a notice public hearing for today, although it hasn't been opened, do you know if there's anybody from the public, uh, who potentially wants to speak at it so that we should open it and give them a chance?
Uh, we can certainly ask. Um, okay, are there any members of the public in the attendees group at this, at this time wish to speak? Okay, are there any members of the public in the attendees group at this, at this time wish to speak? Please use the raise your hand function. I don't see any hands raised at this time, Rob.
Okay, so why don't we just put the whole thing off, uh, for next month with a new sign? Uh, and a new application.
Say something.
Hi, hello?
Hello?
Yes, it's me, Shlomo Fritzvertik.
Oh, hi, okay, sir.
How are you? How are you doing?
Hi.
I just wanna give some comments about all the, a little bit confusing when the last meeting, we talked about the location of the pool, the location of the, of the pool pumps. And, and, and we did it according to what we've been submitted on the previous meeting. Now, in regards to the elevation of number five and me, number three, where do you think if I didn't raise that piece of property of mine, number three, where the water from number five will be going right into my property? So I need to know an answer on that elevation to Mr. Oliveri. Where do you think that water from number five would run?
I think, Mr. Shlomo. If you didn't raise it, it would follow whatever course it's taking now. That's not what this application's about.
And I believe number five had a swell installed across the property boundary.
The proposed, the proposed drawing, your engineer designed a swell along your prop, along the property line that would keep the water on five.
There also was a, is a, is a lowered area between three and five where the trees would be, uh, which runs down the hill by itself. So any water that ran into there would not make it onto five, pardon me, onto three if three were raised. Uh, it would simply sit on the portion of five which is at the existing ground level. Or I assume.
At least it's a simple, it's a simple matter of drawing the lines a little differently and grading it a little differently. Okay, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Okay.
And it's not worth arguing about.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm just putting a point that if you, 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 you're more knowledgeable.
You have a, you have a contour, your engineer has a contour line that's almost parallel to the side property line.
Okay.
But the water's not gonna make a hard right turn. It's gonna take a while. It's gonna cross the property line. Go adjust it, that's all.
Okay, we'll make a swell. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Lisa, uh, in order to postpone the opening of this hearing until next month, what has to be done? You're, you're muted.
All right, hang on. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, nothing. You can just, um, I guess you can ask the board, you can, you can entertain a motion to, um, open the public here, you know, to schedule the, reschedule the public hearing till next month.
Okay, and at that, so we can do that and then all that has to be done, no, no notice has to be given? Other, just posting, just the updating of the sign or does that require other notice? Because if that's the case, it might be fairer to open it anyway.
You say you're, you're.
I'm, I'm, he already did the mailing. There's, there is no need to do another mailing. The sign would just need to be reposted in accordance with the notice, chapter 144 requirements with the date of the April meeting.
Hi, can I interfere?
Can you what?
And say something?
Sure.
I just wanna ask Mr. Rob Was and Mr. Oliveri, just to give us a note, if the plan, they are not what they are looking for, just to give us some comment, so we're gonna comment it and do whatever need to be done. So we will be prepared to the meeting and not to leave it till the last minute. That's what I'm just asking because I'm writing the construction there. I wanna finish it. I wanna, it's kind of a mess. And I just wanna do it right and not to, not to leave it till the last minute.
Rob, is it possible to have a peer meeting?
Absolutely. I was just about to suggest that. So the middle deadline for the April 14th meeting is Wednesday, March 31st. If you guys wanted to submit your plans for a peer meeting on a Friday, both Anthony and I could be available for that. We could go over the plan, make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we're always available, we're always available for meetings. But I think the, the thought that Shlomo was having that you wanted to answer these comments before this meeting. Did you not receive the, uh, the memo that I did at least?
No.
Okay, so I'm not sure why that happened, but that, that being said, you're not expected to come to this meeting with revised plans addressing the comments in my memo that go into the agenda packet on a Friday before the meeting. So nothing, nothing is happening here that is out of order or it's, it's the normal course. You get the comment memos and for the next submission deadline, you have them addressed. You're not expected to address these tonight.
But no, I'm not, I, we just need to know what you are looking for. And Elliot is hearing what I have to say. So if any comment, what we are revising, to do it and to do it right, what you're looking for. And then we come to the meeting with the right plan, what you're looking for.
You're not, you're not hearing me. The, the, the board does not wanna revise plan at the meeting.
Right. Shlomo, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Let's, let's go forward with this where we are with setting up a meeting of just the professional staff and the applicant and the applicant's professional staff in time for them to make changes to what they're proposing and still make the 14 day deadline for our next meeting. So I'm not sure that the Friday before the Monday deadline is fair. I think you gotta, excuse me, you gotta do it a little sooner so they have a chance to make changes and still meet the deadline.
Exactly. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, uh.
Thank you for your time.
Elliot, why don't you and Rob talk and work out a date that works for everybody and, and gives you enough time to make changes, to further changes on any.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on, please. Okay, the next item is a consideration item, 22 Prior Manor Road.
Okay, I'm bringing in the applicant's team now.
Thank you.
Welcome, Rick, Liz, Dan. Uh, Rick, is anybody else from your team wishes to join?
Uh, the landscape architect, Liz, uh, is here. Maybe also. Um, Mark Sullivan.
Mark Sullivan, okay, I see him.
And I'm not sure if Hudson is, is about.
Collins is here too, I think.
Yes.
Yep, I'm here representing Hudson tonight.
Okay, great. So, um, we, uh, we wanted to make some, um, uh, make it clear to the board that, uh, that we had responded to their comments from the last meeting. Um, and, uh, met with the coastal zone, uh, uh, management committee, got their comments along with, uh, Liz Edgerton, uh, and made the following revisions to improve conditions. Uh, the first item was that we, and I'll, I'll share the screen with you. So, um, this is the revised plan. So the, the first item of improvement and response to the board is this serpentine wall was moved, um, several feet to the right.
Four feet, four feet, Rick.
Thanks, Liz. Four feet to the right. Um, closer to the pool. In addition, and this is all related to the pool deck, uh, so that these, these paved surfaces will be reduced. The second item is that this rectangle on the right-hand side of the pool is now grass and previously was paved. The second item is that, uh, again with CZM comments, the pool fence has been moved, uh, out of, out of the zone of the wetlands, away from the wetlands and parallel to the serpentine wall. And then hugs the, the, uh, the back side of the pool deck. Uh, this reduces the, um, the fence, the length of the fence by 30%, reducing disturbance to, to that extent for that part of the project. The third thing is, the third item was, uh, the, to clarify, because there was a discussion at the last meeting, the paving for the pool deck is, uh, pervious dry laid, uh, bluestone. Uh, the fourth item, the driveway extension, uh, to the rear, which is associated, with the new garage and the new garage doors. So is a pervious pavers. That's, uh, pervious concrete pavers. In addition, um, on the aesthetic side, that pervious paver will extend towards the road, towards, uh, Prior Manor Road. And we, we will be removing asphalt and replacing it with, uh, concrete pavers in that location as well. So the net decrease for the pool deck is 630 square feet. Uh, the pavers, pervious pavers were adding where asphalt was previously. That's, uh, 1,050 square feet. So we've made, made progress in that regard. The, the, the fifth item, no planting, uh, the planting material, uh, uh, drawing that you had seen at the last meeting, is this, is exactly the same with one exception. This area between the fence and the serpentine wall is now planted with grasses. And then the last item, just, you know, I, I think you're aware, uh, which is that, uh, the letter was issued, uh, by the building department that the, um, project is zoning compliant.
Yeah. So basically, what I, if I heard it all correctly, Rick, uh, you've done what you were asked to do by us and by Coastal Zone.
That's correct.
Okay, anybody have comments, questions? If the answer is no, does anybody wanna make a motion to set a public hearing on this for April?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Absentions? See you in April, Rick.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, next item on the agenda is 15 Greystone Road.
Okay, Dan Collins, Hudson Engineering is still in the meeting. Uh, Dan, is there anybody else from your team that you're aware of that's in the, uh, attendees list?
Um, the homeowner's here. I don't know if he wants to join in, but, um, he's welcome if he likes.
He's welcome if he likes.
What is his name, Dan?
Uh, Phil.
Phil, okay, I see a Phil Moran. Okay, yes, I see him here.
Uh, Rob, I have a, a is, is he here? Yeah, I guess he's here. Just no picture.
I'm here, Rob.
My understanding is that there is an issue here on the zoning law, uh, zoning because of the fact that the house is not being torn down at this point. And it would, whichever way of the two, uh, proposals might be approved, the, the house would be straddling all three of the lots, which I understand is not permissible. Am I correct, Rob?
Uh, yes, I'm trying to pull up the building inspector's memo right now. I believe that the issue does with street, with the required minimum street frontage. Whereas the lot that's not throwing on gray stone, uh, if anyone might maybe pulling up the map, it'd be helpful.
Yep, I'm pulling, pulling it up right now. All right, does everybody see that? I'm making sure.
Yes, if anyone might maybe just, um, zoom in a little bit.
Sure. One, one second, there we go.
Just, just to be clear, is, is the house that is standing there now to be torn down before the subdivision is approved if it is? Or is it still to be there and the subdivision is for potential future development?
Um, I'd have to defer to, uh, to the owner to set, to figure that one out. I'm not sure. Uh, I don't know if we've discussed that or if we've discussed that with Mike. Um, but I'd have to defer to the owner for that one to answer that question.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, this is the owner, uh, Phil Moran. Could you ask a question one more time?
Sure. The, the, the request is for a three lot subdivision, which we understand.
Yes.
Is the intent to tear down the house first and then subdivide the property into three? Or is the intent to subdivide it into three for potential future development? But leave the house there straddling all three lots?
Uh, the, the latter scenario. The, the, um, desire is to obtain the variance, but, you know, in the meantime, I'm living in the house, so.
Okay, my understanding, Rob, please correct me if my understanding is incorrect. Uh, cause I, I can't find the building inspector's memo at this point. Uh, is that, uh, doing that would not be consistent with zoning. And thus we could not proceed with either of the proposals with the house there.
I do have the building inspector's memo open now in front of me. Maybe, um, I can screen share my screen if everyone wants to be able to read the text.
Sure.
Let's look at that.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Polkary raises, uh, two issues in his, in his memo dated the 23rd of February. The first deals with the required minimum street frontage, which was the first item that I had mentioned. Um, the second bullet down here states that at this time, the applicant is not proposing to remove the existing structure. This will be creating three non-conforming lots in that the structure would straddle the new lot lines. Therefore, the existing structure would need to meet required setbacks.
Would not meet.
But sorry, would not meet the required setbacks. So, um, I, I would hate to misspeak for the building inspector, but it seems that he's indicating this would have to at least be noted on the plan. I'm not sure if the zoning board or plan with resolution could be a condition that, you know, would basically capture this, that the lot, you know, as soon as any construction is started, that exists has, has to be taken down or, or, or for the subdivision is, plat is filed. Uh, that part I can't speak to.
The, the planning board doesn't have authority to approve a subdivision, a subdivision that would create non-conforming lots.
Right.
But I guess the, the question is, at what point do they have to take the house down? If it's part of the plan to remove the house, so you're filing the subdivision map. So at some point in time, you're filing a subdivision map with a house still standing there, right? But as long as it's slated to be removed, question is when?
Right, that can be, it can be handled with a condition and we can discuss what timeframe that that would happen.
Yeah.
Cause obviously the file, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg, right? Filing a subdivision map, uh, with the county that shows the house to be removed. And it's still there the day after the filing, right? So it's technically in violation at that point, I guess, but.
Yeah, that makes sense, right? And that would be a plat requirement, you know, obviously we wouldn't wanna subdivide the lots and have the house stay there. Because, you know, I think that our common order, right, would merge the lots.
I mean, obviously, I think we can, we can have that conversation. And then I just wanna, I wanted to make sure that, uh, I could just present the two, the two options, just so you guys see what, what we were going for here. Um, we know we have to go to the zoning board for both. Um, so either way, it's up to the zoning board to, uh, to really point us in a direction if we could even go anywhere with this. Um, obviously, if they decide that they don't want it either way, um, it's kind of dead in the water, um, but it is up to them. So I was just hoping that I could present. Um, then get some direction to the zoning board and, um, put it in their hands for now and then we can come back, maybe discuss that, uh, when we come back or if we come back from the zoning board, if that's possible.
Just to set your expectations for the zoning board, um, I, I think you could take some sort of straw poll and, and get some feedback from them, but they can't do any variance. The sequencing will have to ultimately be first, the subdivision is approved before the variances can be awarded because they can only issue variances for the lots that exist.
Mm-hmm.
As far as the flag lot situation, I thought, uh, Rich Polkary had an opinion that that did not help the situation. Uh, was it, was I correct?
I don't think it's really of much use to anybody.
Right.
Well, the, the flag, it's not necessarily, that's what I was, we wanted a, a determination from the zoning board for this, this, uh, alternative. Um, because in the zoning code, um, if, if you want, could I, should I, can I go through each one and just give you a, a, an overview of what first, so that we can, then we can talk from there? Is that something we can do?
Sure.
Yes.
Um, this is, uh, alternate one, we put together two that, uh, different alternatives that we submitted, uh, both obviously, as I've discussed before, um, would need to go to the, uh, go to the zoning board, uh, for their review. Uh, first is a determination for alternate one. And the second would be a variance for, uh, the alternate two. Um, this is alternate one. Um, it consists of the three lots, obviously you could see lot one and two are off of, uh, Greystone Road, uh, with, uh, lot three with frontage off of Ellsworth, Ellsworth Road. Um, in the town code per section two forty dash four, uh, the frontage is defined as the extent of a building or of land along a street. Um, it doesn't say whether it's continuous or not. Um, right now we have seventy-three point, uh, I'm sorry, what was it again? Seventy-one point three two, uh, feet of frontage along Ellsworth, um, and we are able to configure the lots to have another, uh, thirteen point six eight feet along Greystone, uh, to kind of make up the difference uh, for the total eighty-five required. Um, since the, the zoning is, is the, the zoning definition is kind of vague in, in relation to something like this. Um, we were looking to request to go to the zoning board to get a, uh, an interpretation, uh, see what they, what they would consider, uh, frontage. Um, have, obviously the code is a little vague on this one. Uh, the second alternative, again, three lots. Um, basically the same configuration. Um, we've gotten rid of, uh, the, the, the extra stem up to the top of, to Greystone Road for lot three. Uh, so now it's just lot one and two with frontage, uh, only on Greystone Road. Um, and lot three with frontage just on Ellsworth Road. Um, lot three, uh, would need a variance of, let me see what I have here. So, uh, we needed a variance, uh, what was it, a thirteen point eight, six eight feet or so, uh, to get to that eighty-five. Um, we, as part of this, obviously, the rest of the, all the three lots are, uh, they meet and exceed area requirements. It would literally just be, uh, the frontage requirement that we would need to get a variance on just for this one lot, uh, for lot three. Um, as part of this, we did put together a, uh, a map for this evening. Um, basically we wanted to see within this zoning, who else or what other lots uh, are below the required frontage required for the R ten zoning, which again is eighty-five feet. Um, you can see the red, all the red ones are the, the ones that are below the eighty-five feet. Um, obviously, if we spanned out, there might be other ones, uh, that we didn't catch. Uh, I see there are a couple that are down, uh, the next street over from east, uh, the next, or Ellsworth, uh, Ellsworth Road, uh, comes down and bends around. The next street down, there might be a couple over here. Um, so it's not something that's out of character with the neighborhood. Um, specifically there are, uh, I believe we counted thirty-one properties just in, in this, uh, picture that we have that are less than the required eighty, uh, eighty-five feet of frontage. Um, and then there are actually six lots meet directly across the street from, uh, the lot three that are, uh, much less there, probably fifty by a hundred lots. It looks like that, it's pretty consistent across the board on the front. Let this slowly back. Hold on. These six lots, uh, basically fifty, 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 fifty across the line, uh, across the line. Um, so I mean, basically, yes, I mean, we will need variances to get this, the subdivision approved. Um, obviously, we can talk about, uh, you know, the, any conditions for the demolition of the house. Um, uh, but, but we wanted to see if we can get to the zoning board for them to look at this to get their idea of, uh, of what they'd rather have, uh, or what they were looking to approve. I'd also want to get your feedback, obviously, um, to see what, uh, um, which direction, uh, the planning board would go in, um, if, if this were to move forward, if you guys would want to, if you have any feedback or anything. Um, obviously now this is starting to get a little slow on me, so sorry about that.
Okay, Lisa, since you're counsel to both boards, what is the appropriate procedure here? Because I, I guess it would be possible for the planning board unofficially, sort of all kind of thing, to look at which of the two designs it would prefer if the zoning board permitted them in the first place. I mean, two lots clearly could be done with zoning with no variance as indicated. And then the, the zoning board may or may not, uh, pay any attention to what the planning board might recommend. The zoning board certainly isn't bound by what we do. Is that the way to proceed or is zoning first or who's first?
So, um, actually, the zoning board cannot issue any of the variances until after the property has been subdivided. But it sounds like what he'd like to do, what they'd like to do is go to the zoning board and, and solicit their, their views to get a sense of it. I mean, ultimately, each board has independent, um, you know, i- independent authority, so, and they'll need both boards to approve. So I, I think they're at the stage now where they're just soliciting views of both boards. But sequencing the planning board approval will have to come first.
Lisa, so then in that case, because the board, the, the planning board would be approving a subdivision for a new lot that does not conform with the zoning for frontage if alternative B is proposed. Um, so I guess would that be captured as a condition on the plan and would resolution for the zoning board to make the, okay, I understand.
Okay.
But they're also, so what they're doing on the, the A scenario is really appealing the building inspector's interpretation to see if that indeed would satisfy full frontage divided up between the two streets, in which case there would be no variance, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, they may want to do that anyway unless the planning board just doesn't like that. That configuration maybe advise them not to even pursue that. I don't know, but.
Question. Why not, why don't, if it's acceptable, Lisa, in, in procedure? We don't, there are two plans. Maybe they can actually, I don't know if it's possible, put them up next to each other. I know they've been submitted to us in the packets. And maybe, although I know what my reaction would be, I don't know what the other members of the boards would be. And, uh, just totally informally, because that's what we can do at this point.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I, can I raise a, what I think is the threshold issue, and I may be doing it because the evening is dragging on, we're almost there. Um, I have some difficulty being asked, uh, as a member of the planning board to give multiple scenario essentially advisory opinion when I believe, I haven't done the math, but I believe that this whole quandary, forget A or B, is because the applicant wants to make three lots out of the existing property rather than two. Um, I don't think that should be our business. If there's a concrete proposal made to us, then we consider it and make whatever disposition, ask whatever questions, offer a straw poll if that's appropriate, but thi- this is too many things. I think it's unfair to ask us to do that. And I, and I gather, I'm making a supposition here, that, uh, the owner wants to continue to live in the house that's on the property, which is, would not be compliant zoning wise if there was a subdivision. So, uh, th- there's a possibility, I won't try to put a probab-, you know, a quantitative likelihood on it, that this could all, if, if it doesn't turn out, uh, to the applicant's satisfaction, all, all of this effort would have been essentially spinning wheels on wet sand. I, I think this is asking us for too much.
Does anybody else have a view?
Am I correct, Mr. Collins, that two lots, uh, could be zoning compliant and otherwise compliant from this property if it was only a two lot subdivision?
You could have a two, obvi-, yeah, you absolutely, absolutely could have a two lot, just two lots. I mean, we've proven that uh, in, in providing just the three, because we have the two that are fully compliant. Um, the, the alternative that has the frontage on, on both Ellsworth and, and Greystone, I, I, if, if it's determined that that by, by the zoning board or by the building inspector, that, that seventy-one point three two feet along Ellsworth and the combination of the Greystone frontage, um, meeting the eighty-five is, is, is adequate, then that would be fully compliant too. But that's bearing that, uh, that determination. And that's one of the things that we wanted to, to, to get an idea of what, uh, your board as well as the zoning board, uh, would, would think about that. Or, or if their determination is that.
Isn't it really the building inspector who would be giving you the answers to that first?
Yeah.
He, he did, and I, I think what he said was that's not com-, I, I believe he's saying that little flag piece there does not make it compliant with frontage. So what they want to do is go to the zoning board to appeal that and get their, I guess the zoning board could, could render an interpretation and either agree or not.
It's not an appeal, it's, it's a supersession.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So if they, if they get that, then presumably, if, let's say they agree, then they come back with three as of right lots.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't mean the board has to approve three lots. They still might feel two lots work better. But you, you would know it's a as of right at that point, so to speak.
Yes.
The other way, it's, would need a variance and it's maybe one strike again.
And it would, yeah, and it was, yeah, it was one front, it's just the frontage variance, um, the, the lot size, everything else with depth. Um, all the coverage requirements it meets and exceeds everything. It's just the frontage. Which again, if you look at the surrounding neighborhood, um, everything is, there's a, there's a more than one instance where the existing frontage is.
Sure. But, but a- as far as the dividing of the front, frontage, I think that, I, I'm not sure, but I think maybe the zoning board can make that decision independently of all this, right? It's just an appeal of a, uh.
Yeah, if it's an interpretation, then that doesn't, that's, there's no prerequisite of a subdivision that, to make an interpretation.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't that the way to go? Then, then everybody knows what the rules are.
Right, go to the zoning board and get some guidance.
Uh, I mean, we figured we'd come to you guys first. You guys get a, get an idea of what you, I mean, looking at the plans, obviously, uh, which, which one you guys would prefer, uh, and then obviously we wanted to go to the zoning board after, um, if you'd rather, we go to the zoning board first and then have them take a look at it, then we'll come back.
We're not limited, we're not limited partners in your, uh, client's, uh, real estate development.
I know, I know, I understand that.
You know, I think what Ira is basically, and I'm interpreting Ira and I'm going down the wrong path. But I think what I, we would like you to do is present, if you're coming to us as the planning board, present one plan. We'll work on that one plan and what your plan number two is another alternative we may have to look at if indeed your plan number one does not work with us. So, I, I agree that we, we only will look at one plan at one time. I think that's the correct procedure. If you want to go to the zoning board first and not proceed in that direction, that's your alternative.
Okay, understood, understood.
Or a two lot subdivision, which apparently is, is as easy as apple pie, so to speak.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think we've gone as far as we can go tonight.
Yeah, I, 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 I think we got a direction. I think we're gonna, uh, uh, we'll talk about, well, with our client tomorrow and then we'll see where we go next.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number seven is two twenty Helmick's Road. Uh, that is simply an extension of an, a permit that we already approved because the statute, so, or the code so requires. And thus it was set for a, a public hearing for this evening without a consideration first because it basically was nothing to consider. Uh, I mean, we have the right to not extend the permit, obviously. Uh, but I would suggest at this point, a motion to open the public hearing, uh, with respect to this, assuming it's been noticed, Francine? Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Lisa, I just wanted to point out, uh, Lisa and Francine, Ron, Ron mentioned that he had to drop off the call, so he's not voting right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, let's designate which alternative, if, uh, which alternate will be sitting in for Ron?
Do we, do we pick somebody? Is, is, isn't there an A, B order for this?
Actually, Ralph, you can so designate as chair.
Okay, well, Sarah's been doing the talking, so in this case, how about Sarah?
They're up next time, John.
Yep. All right, uh, so why don't we, uh, maybe get a, a short summary of what this is all about?
First, Mr. Sal Alnitro, have you been going to law school at night?
Try. I, 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 uh, I don't, I'm not an attorney and I don't play one on TV.
You're good.
You're too smart to be an attorney.
A lawyer, I have young associates, right as well as this, or as clear as this.
Make sure that, I pass that along.
I agree, it's remarkably well-written.
Good evening, uh, uh, board members. You know, uh, just as an aside, today, today marks one fully calendar year that we've been, we were together last as a in-person meeting. Uh, and it, uh, it's kind of eerie to, to think about it, an entire year's passed, but, uh, uh, I'm glad to see everybody's doing well. Um, yeah, Chairman, this, this application is a, uh, an application for renewal of a, uh, wetland permit that was, uh, issued by this, uh, planning commission, uh, a year ago today. Um, for the property at two twenty, uh, Helmick's Road. Uh, as you probably already know, the, uh, memorandum that was circulated to, uh, yourself and the members of the board just highlights, uh, some of the salient points relative to where we were, where we are and where we need to be. Um, uh, I, I, I'm here to answer questions. I have the team here. Uh, but the project as a whole, uh, did have a late start, um, with the COVID, uh, uh, issues and waiting for other approvals from different state agencies. Uh, we did start in June and we were actually very pleasant, pleasantly surprised to make the progress that we have made on the site. Um, given the late start in the calendar year and, uh, we're, we're, we're almost there. Um, the progress is, um, uh, quite complimentary to the, uh, the folks that have been working hard and diligently, uh, to get uh, the various aspects of the job completed, uh, with relationship to the wetlands. And we're also working on site plan related issues as well. So, um, we welcome any member of the board to, uh, come to the property, take a look. I do have a photo montage of, uh, site development, uh, conditions. If you're interested, I can share that.
Why don't we do that one next, you know, another time, given the time.
I'll just sit here and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer questions, but we are seeking, uh, permissions uh, and authority to extend the permit for another year.
Okay, just, I have one question. According to what you wrote, uh, you're, you're, within the one year, you presumably can complete the wet, the, what you're getting an extension for today if it's given, but you cannot complete what the building, uh, permit, uh, the, the, pardon me, the building approval does. So you're going to be back at that point potentially to extend that approval as well?
Yeah, so you're right. Uh, and I, and I, uh, hinted, not hinted, but I, uh, asked that question in the mem-, in the letter requiring site plan approval, uh, which, uh, we, we, we may have to come back a year from now to, to request that extension as well. Um, we are, uh, moving along aggressively towards trying to complete simultaneous tasks. Uh, the activities are moving in that direction where we, we may be close to complete, not quite. But, um, all things considered, um, we are, just like we are tonight, we're cognizant of our time limits. we're cognizant of our time limits on these various permits and we don't want them to expire without coming back. So we we have a good team that that we're, we're mindful of the fact that we need to be back here to ask for permission to extend.
Do appreciate you're doing this before it expired. And being here today. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing. Rob, is there anyone who, you know, in our queue wants to join us?
This time, Ralph, our queue has nobody left in the attendees group, so by default, there's nobody here to speak.
Okay.
And we have no emails.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. And with all notices have been given, is that correct too? Francine, you there?
Yeah, she she confirmed at the beginning of the meeting that all applications on for public hearing had been duly noticed.
Okay, so we have a draft of a potential one-year extension resolution. I don't know if people had a chance to look at it. I've only found one item, which is at the end of the first, whereas, the last, whereas. And there is a, an end where there should not be, and there should be a period before it. But other than that, I have no comments. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, about a motion to approve the resolution extending the permit for a year?
What'd you say?
To close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I've got to do that first, a motion to close the public hearing.
Done moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Now, a motion to approve the draft resolution with a minor change, I just.
Ralph, before you do that, we have authority to do this.
Yeah, Lisa, we do, do we not?
Yes, I mean, the the wetlands and water courses chapter only allows permits to be issued for one year at a time. So yes, you have the authority to extend for one additional year.
Thank you.
Yeah, if they can't complete it within the year, they got to come back to us again.
And, yeah, exactly, there's no limits on how many times they can extend in the code.
Okay, anything further or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Have a good evening.
Thank you to all, and thank you for taking the time. Have a good one.
You too. Everybody stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all this month and nothing for us.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.